Call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council, Monday, February 11th, 2019. All councilors, with the exception of Councilor Moore and Councilor Hudson, are present. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Rules of Order. The meetings operate under the rules of order and any other rules and procedures adopted by the council at the organizational meeting held this past November. Item four, Adoption of Ellsworth City Council Minutes, the January 14th, 2019, regular council meeting. Mr. Chairman, move approval? Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? All those abstaining, myself, I wasn't here? Motion passes, four zero. Item five, City Manager's Report. Mr. Cole.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, councilors. I have only one item tonight. The past two council, regular council meetings, Gordon Workman from Five Westwood Drive, who's also here tonight, has shared with the council concerns regarding a drainage issue with his neighbor up on Westwood Drive. Feeling that the public could get the impression that the city government has not addressed the issue. I thought it might be good to just briefly share with the public and the council where we're at on this issue. Mr. Workman has been told by the code enforcement officer that this is not an enforcement matter, that in fact, this is really a matter between two neighbors. Mr. Workman had stated that the flow of this storm water was in violation of the property maintenance ordinance of the city, but that ordinance exempts single-family residences, so it does not apply. I asked Dwight Tilton, our code enforcement officer, out of an abundance of caution, to give the opinion of our attorney at Barra, and he states, "We should have no involvement in this matter. It is strictly an issue between neighboring property owners." So I did want to make that clear for the public record. We can all sympathize with Mr. Workman. It's frustrating, obviously, dealing with water issues of that type. But the code enforcement officer did do his due diligence. We did check with our city attorney, and this comes down to a private issue between two neighboring parties. And answer any questions you might have. If not, that's my report for the evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item six, Committee Reports. If there were any councilors that attended any committee meetings over the past month and need to let us know what may or may not have occurred in them, now's your time.
Okay. Dale and I met with the Recreation Commission this past week, just last Wednesday, and the decision to postpone many of the winter carnival activities was made due to lack of snow and dangerous conditions. So stay tuned for dates and times of when those are going to be rescheduled. I think the fireworks are rescheduled as well. Tammy, is that correct?
I haven't yet.
Okay.
I was waiting for you.
Okay. That will be posted on the city website, is that correct? And the Down East Family Y Facebook page, excuse me. Also, the Grand, I think Downtown Ellsworth has been posting that as well on Facebook, and the Wood Lawn Museum Facebook page, so. Shane Lowell gave us the updates on the travel basketball season. It's now over, and they're going into the tournament season. Indoor soccer is also starting. And Shane is creating a task force with the principal of the EEMS, to Ms. Gabionelli, to identify some potential gaps in programming and activities sponsored by the schools and by the Y. There's some feeling, I guess, that some, there might be some gaps where children are getting, falling through the cracks, and we'd like to have as many children participate in activities as possible, so. Robin Clark from the Y would like to offer a summer fitness series for free at the Nolton Park this summer. She has a tentative schedule, and there'll be details to follow on that. The Ellsworth Little League came to, do I talk about the request? Or is that?
I think it's.
Okay. Never mind. And the budget meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday at six. Is that it? That's it.
Any other councilors? Seeing none. Item seven, Citizens' Comments. We set aside this time if anyone would like to come up to the podium and speak on any item that is not on the agenda. We allow approximately three minutes. So this is a time in the sun, as it were. If anyone would like to come up and let us know. Well, there's one behind you.
Hi, Gordon Workman, Three Westwood Drive. I don't think it was part of the agenda for it, so I think I can talk about it.
Sure.
I do believe, under the subdivision rules, under Order 56, subdivision provided a drainage system for that subdivision. And that's what it's provided for, drainage to that drainage system, not to be redirected to a neighboring property. And it's not stormwater, it's actually runoff from his roof and what have you, redirected through pipes and channels. It's not a natural flaw. It's an unnatural flaw. That said, so, plus, there's some other issues been going on I haven't heard anything about, so I'm not going to bring that up. I'm still waiting to see if I get a response from a complaint I filed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. You're up, sir.
Think I can do this in three minutes. I'm Neil McKay, eighteen Joseph Way in Ellsworth. Speaking on behalf of the Dollywood Hill Homeowners Association, representing those residents on Catherine Ave and Joseph Way. Basically, there are three points that I'd like to raise for consideration. One is that we asked the council to consider paying dues to our association. The city has a water tower on Catherine Ave. We think it's appropriate, reasonable, fair, that the city pay their share of that expense of maintaining those roads, since they, in fact, are property owners on the road with the rest of us. And in fact, the city has acknowledged this in the past and paid dues in the past. Second, I'd ask the city to consider repairing or replacing the pipe stand at the end of the driveline that leads to the water tower. This winter and several winters past, with rainstorms and melting ice and snow, there's failures at this pipe stand that's causing a lot of damage to the road, leaving the homeowners the sole expense of paying for that repair, even though we share as neighbors the road. And third, I would ask for consideration that the city consider taking the roads over. Several years ago, we spent a lot of time with the planning board, year and a half probably, fair amount of legal expenses related to the conditions of the roads when the subdivision was built. Ultimately, the city required the developer to repair those roads, to bring them up to the city specifications for the roads and the subdivision plan. We hired an engineer to certify that the roads were in compliance with the city specifications and standards. And we're told at that time that the city had a policy of not accepting any new roads, and have been told that repeatedly for many years. Now we know that Alexis Way is being accepted, or in the process of being accepted by the city. Alexis Way is a stone's throw from Catherine Ave or Dollywood Estates. Dollywood was developed before, long before Alexis Way, and we have a shared interest in the road, given the city's water tower there. So I think all three of those points are fair, reasonable requests, and I'd like the council to consider that. I don't know what the exact process is from here. If I can speak with any one of you, or collectively with others, I'd be happy to do that.
Be glad to. Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question of the speaker? The two roads you mentioned, are they asphalt-covered?
They're not at this time.
And that's one of the issues.
Yeah, and we understand that.
And just for the public, Alexis Way has come to an agreement, if they can come up with it, that they will pay the full cost of bringing it up to standard, paving it to meet our standards, and paying it over a number of years. So that would be very important if you get all signatures in your neighborhood to do that. And Mr. Cole will be the man.
And we've had these conversations amongst the property owners, and, you know, we would like to proceed with that, you know, with that process. In the meantime, I think it's still appropriate that the city take some responsibility for the maintenance costs of the roads, as you have in the past. I think it's fair that the city uses that road. It's the only access to that water tower. I think it's perfectly reasonable and fair that you, the city pays its share of those costs. Not very much, frankly, but they are there. And the same thing with the pipe stand. I think it's reasonable that we have this damage that's in part at least caused by the failure of that pipe stand.
Is that what we call a culvert?
Yeah, I guess. I would have called it a culvert, but the people I talked to in the engineering department called it a pipe stand, so. Anyways, that's our position, and I'll be happy to talk to Mr. Cole again about this. But I would like the city council to help us, guide us through this process of looking at accepting the roads. Thank you for your time.
Do you know what the city has paid in the past?
I don't know the exact amount. I can find that out for you, I'd be happy to do that. I know that the, our annual dues range, have ranged from a hundred dollars a year to a hundred and fifty dollars a year, so it would be in that range.
Yeah, it'd be good to have for the ongoing budget process, so we could plug it into next year's figures.
And I have that information, I have, you know, the deposits that we made from the payments that the city did make in the past.
We can check the history, you're not sure when this lapsed?
I'm going to say it was probably eight years ago, maybe a little longer.
Thing is, it comes from the Water Department, not the taxpayer.
We'll take it from whoever.
Yeah.
Thank you, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Judy Blood, I live in Ellsworth Falls. I'm here tonight to express my disappointment with the council's lack of interest or action regarding the Taconic Firehouse, also known as the Ellsworth Falls Community Building. This building has significant historic interest to the city. It is the only 19th-century firehouse in Ellsworth. This building spans the era of horse-drawn handpumpers to steam engines to motorized fire trucks. And yes, the Taconic housed a Model A, which I understand is still alive, as is the Taconic pumper, the fire bell, and at last check, the firehouse itself. The Franklin Street Firehouse is the only other Ellsworth fire structure predating this building, and it burned in the fire of 1933. The Taconic pumper and its crew responded to that fire. The building is one of a very few 19th-century wooden firehouses still standing in Maine, making it truly a rare structure. Yet, it is slated for demolition. Legal assistance indicates we cannot hold Weber responsible because the agreement was not attached to the deed. Why not? While the agreement might not have been recorded, the will of the citizens was and is well-known. Councilmen at State to accept the proposal for the Ellsworth Falls Community Building and to authorize the city manager to sign any legal paperwork necessary to proceed with the sale. So the question is, what happened? Why was it not attached to the deed? Was this an error? Or were the citizens' rights and interests not protected? The city's attorneys and the then-city manager's names are both on that deed. Why was the agreement not attached? In the RFP, the city penned, "Any change in use of this building at any time would require the vote of the city council." Now this council refuses to make good on those words. The Ellsworth Falls Taconic Firehouse Preservation Group stands ready to shepherd this building back to health. The city was presented with three options by Attorney Grossman. Option three, to enter into negotiations to reacquire the property. The establishment of this preservation group means the city would not be put in the situation that Attorney Grossman indicated, unsustainable costs with maintaining aging structures. If the city would regain control of this property, the group would manage the costs and requirements of repair and restoration the same way as the Surrey Schoolhouse Group has breathed life back into that building. While even the main preservation is willing to step up and help the city broker a deal with the current owner, the city and Weber should be elated that there is a group ready to step forward to relieve them of their respective responsibilities and manage the restoration of this treasure. The restored firehouse would be a welcome beacon to visitors and citizens alike entering our fine city. But instead, a building with significant Ellsworth history faces demolition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rebecca Maddox Swilber, Ellsworth Falls, Maine. Speaking to the same subject, saving of the Taconic Ellsworth Falls Community Building. We have been here for several months in a row, before the council, three times, and Citizen Speak, and once on the agenda. When we finally had the sponsorship to be on the agenda, we were told at the beginning of the meeting that we were not to repeat any information. Our speech was censored in that manner. It says, "Under the duties of the council is to hear and respond to citizens' concerns and to resolve citizens' problems." This problem, as you know, I have been following since 1986, because it came up three different times. The fate of the building was in the hands of the citizens, and it was fought for, as we all well know. And we know what the decision was in 2005. Three attorneys have all expressed that reforming the deed would be the city's responsibility. We as citizens cannot act, we can, I mean, we could ask for, file an injunction, we can file suit against the city. There's a number of things that we can do, but the right thing to do is the city to go to Weber and either negotiate or to file, that the contract be reformed so that that agreement that preceded the deed, which should have, the two should have been attached to one another, could be corrected, because it is well-known, and there were many witnesses to the acceptance of the RFP as written, to maintain and preserve. In the city charter, it says, "The city council will be responsible for the administration of all municipal affairs of the city of Ellsworth, except as otherwise provided by this charter," and I've read through it, "and is vested with all the powers and authority of the city of Ellsworth to perform the municipal affairs of the city." That agreement was made, it was signed. It was signed by our attorney as witness. It did not go into the deed, which was also signed by the city's attorney, same person, should have been attached to the deed, completely mysterious as to why it wasn't, but it says right here in the charter that you have the authority to act in the business of the city. I am aggrieved by what has occurred here as a taxpayer. Weber got the building for $5,000 with an agreement to maintain and preserve, which they did not do. The value of the building now, less $5,000, is still a significant chunk of money. And I would ask you a ridiculous question, such as, would you credit my account with the difference? Because the fact is, that is a tremendous loss to the city, and I have fought as hard as I know how to save a building, which was supposed to have been saved in 2005. And I've stood here multiple times, and I've heard different council members express that they were concerned for the building too, but I have seen no action, even when we're on the agenda. We literally had our legs taken out from under us before we ever stood at the podium. I don't think that's fair. And in reading through the charter, I don't see that there's any place that says the citizen's voice will not be responded to, especially when the business of the city from 2005 was not followed through on as reported to the audience that sat here in 2005. We listened to the details of the agreement that was signed. We went away thinking it was taken care of. I'm asking you, as citizen who has been here month after month, to sue Weber or negotiate with him in such a way as to reform the contract, because it is clear that what was agreed upon has not happened, and no one in authority, direct authority, because you are the party, the city of Ellsworth is the party that dealt with Weber on this agreement, are the ones that should take action. Yes, we can, but that's not right. I'm asking you, on behalf of our group, to do the right thing and utilize the authority that you have in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none. Hi to me. Presentation of awards.
I don't believe we have any awards tonight, Mr. Chair.
The consent agenda. All items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in its normal sequence. Items tonight on the agenda are item nine, Council Order Number 021901, Request of the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per the attached spreadsheet, and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through the municipal quick claims deeds. Item 10, Council Order Number 021902, Request of the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to release properties redeemed during the 30-day redemption period ending January 18th, 2019, through quick claim deeds. The complete list is available in the city clerk's office, and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through the municipal quick claims deeds. And item 11, Council Order Number 021903, Request of the city manager to appoint a representative and alternate to the main service senate coalition. Is there any counselor that would like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion, please.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. New business. Item 12, Public Hearing and Action on the Issuance of Business Licenses. First one this evening is Colonial One LLC, doing business as Colonial Inn, 321 High Street, for a new city lodging house license. Madam Clerk, all of these applications, everything is in order on them? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on this application. If there's anyone that would like to speak on it, now's your opportunity. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, is there a motion?
Yeah, I was going to ask that.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, this is a new one. Yes, sir, would you stand and state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Barry Clough.
And you're attached to the application, how, sir?
I'm the principal of Colonial One LLC, which is the owner of the property where the Colonial Inn is located.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you for doing business in Ellsworth.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of Colonial One for a new city lodging.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Next is LGovs LLC, doing business as Governor's Restaurant, 253 High Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, vichular liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant, Class III and IV malt and vinous liquor license. Open the public hearing for this application. If there's anyone that would like to speak. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counselors.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Next is Sangiva Abeya Sakera, doing business as Serendib, 2 State Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, vichular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant, Class III and IV malt and vinous liquor license. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of Serendib for renewal of their licenses.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 13, Council Order Number 021904, Request of the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to offer for sale by sealed bid various properties that have been acquired for non-payment of real estate taxes. The complete list is available at the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Back on December 7th, the city foreclosed on multiple properties. The majority of those properties included timeshares, but we also foreclosed on nine parcels. Once those properties foreclosed, we send the property owners a 30-day redemption notice, where they have 30 days to redeem all of the taxes, as well as the interest and lien costs associated with that parcel. As part of our tax-acquired property ordinance, the next step in the process is to come to council and ask to sell those properties by sealed bid. There's a list of the properties that are included in this. Like I said, the majority of them are timeshares, 37 of them, and then there's also nine other properties. We do have another four properties that we're looking at that we'll be bringing back to you at next month's council meeting.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions? You all look excited to regain 37 more timeshares.
I think we're up to 300.
Which we have on sale for a hundred dollars apiece.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Council Order 021904, Request of the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to offer for sale by sealed bid 37 timeshare units and nine properties located in Ellsworth acquired for the non-payment of real estate taxes. Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 14, council order number 021905, request of the city manager to confirm the appointment of an interim city planner.
Yes, thank you. Counselors, as you know, Michelle Gagnon, our city planner, is leaving for Bar Harbor. Her last day is this Friday, February 15th. My plan is to appoint Dwight Tilton, our code enforcement officer, as the interim city planner. For those of you who go back a long ways with Dwight, Dwight's been here for 14 years, knows our ordinances, our practices, our policies in depth. He also, in my mind, has a reputation for fairness and good judgment, and I think he'll do a good job keeping the trains running while we go out and select a new city planner. Dwight will work with our assistant city planner, Steve Fuller, in the meantime, to work through this transition period. We have hosted the job and are aggressively out seeking a new city planner. I would propose that this appointment, should you choose to confirm it, be effective February 15th, this Friday, to coincide with Michelle Gagnon's departure.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions? Is there a motion?
I thank Dwight for accepting this.
Yeah.
He's got a full plate now, but.
He does.
And I would move approval.
Is there a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor? Item 15, presentation and discussion. I'm sorry, presentation and discussion on a possible single-use plastic bag ordinance presented by the Green Plan Subcommittee on Energy and Solid Waste, sponsored by Councilor Fortier. Mr. Fortier.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I get involved in some of this Green Plan operation solely because I was interested in the other half of our committee, which is energy efficiency and solid waste. And then I got roped into working on a plastic bag ban. As most of you know, I have a daughter that's a very strong-headed marine biologist, and she reminds me that this bottle is killing her fish. So I've worked with these folks for a number of months on many different items, roadside cleanup, Cod's Brook cleanup, stuff like this. And then we got into this plastic bag business. A lot of people in Maine are doing it. It's the right thing to do environmentally. Marine biology-wise, it's a critical time in our country. And I say this because I'm not a follower. A lot of people around us are doing this, and we're the biggest creator of plastic trash in Hancock County, I believe, because of a number of people and the shopping that's done here. So I've worked with the folks from EGAP, which is the Ellsworth Green Action Team. They took an ordinance that was already passed, and they'll get into this, adopted a little bit for things for the Ellsworth area. I'll remind you that there are also four or five bills in the state legislature coming up for a statewide ban. I don't want that personally to cancel out our activity because local control is always better, but I understand there's a need for consistency from all retailers in the state. So with that said, I will turn this, if you'd allow me, over to Martha Dickinson, who is chairing the Green Action Team, and we've got three or four other people that are gonna make very short presentations. They fully understand that this is just presenting it, that no decisions are gonna be made tonight, that I've offered them that save your bullets for the real vote later on in our sessions coming down, and that I would hope at the end of this presentation that the council will see fit to accept the presentation, direct the city manager and his staff to work through this as any other ordinance, and if necessary, have a workshop on it so we can get public participation at this level, and then go on from there. So that's my hope on this agenda item. I don't expect any passage of a bag ban tonight. So if you allow, the committee will speak.
I'm Martha Dickinson of the Ellsworth Green Action Team and the Green Plan. And first off, I want to introduce Julia Ventresco, who has been our leader on this. And there'll be about four of us all together who want to speak before it's over, but we'll be brief. Thank you.
If they're all that brief, we're in good shape. Thank you. Next.
Well, good evening, council members and members of the public, and those out in TV land. Okay?
I'll pause this as soon as I can.
You all set?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
As Martha said, I'm Julia Ventresco. I'm an Ellsworth resident, small business owner, and a member of the Ellsworth Green Action Team. First, I would like to thank the city council for making room on your busy agenda for us to present our draft single-use carryout plastic bag ordinance. And I'd also like to recognize and give special thank you to Gary Fortier for working so closely with the Ellsworth Green Action Team as a member, and shepherding us through this somewhat murky ordinance process, murky to us, anyway. Your depth of knowledge and thoughtful point of view and guidance has been invaluable. I also would like to thank Steve Fuller for his unbiased input and help with many of the details as we began this process, and his continued support. So before I go into the details of the ordinance, for those, I know you all are familiar with the group, the Ellsworth Green Action Team, but for those who may be unfamiliar with the Ellsworth Green Action Team, I'd like to give a brief history, not of the world, thankfully, but of our group, and also provide a bit of context as to why we feel there is a need for a plastic bag ordinance in Ellsworth. So the Ellsworth Green Action Team formed over a year ago as a subcommittee of the Ellsworth Green Plan. Our focus was, and still is, on waste management and green energy. However, over the last several months, we have found ourselves taking a more action-oriented role in the community, and we have renamed our subcommittee the Ellsworth Green Action Plus, it's just a catchier name, too. From the start, the list of issues and projects we wanted to tackle was long, things such as solid waste, recycling, municipal solar, and of course, plastic pollution. But after taking part in the 2018 Card Brook cleanup and the citywide roadside cleanup, both at which a shocking amount and variety of plastic debris was collected, we knew that addressing plastic pollution in Ellsworth must take precedence. By the way, you don't need to go waiting into Card Brook or into the ditches along the roads in Ellsworth to find plastic debris. Just look at the green space in front of the former Rite Aid property. I was out there this morning taking photos, and the amount of plastic trash in that small area is staggering. A good third or more of it, single-use plastic bags. Not only is this bad for the environment and wildlife, more on that later from one of my fellow committee members, it is unsightly and hard to miss. It's on display for anyone driving around or through Ellsworth to see. Not a good look for our city, not a healthy situation for our environment or citizens. Add to this the fact that the manufacture and distribution of plastic bags puts tons of carbon dioxide in the air, not to mention plastic bags are made from petroleum, a precious resource that should not be squandered on producing something that is meant to be used once and then thrown away wherever away is. But the good news is, single-use plastic bags can be easily avoided. Before plastic bags were invented roughly 50 years ago, nobody was asking, how can I possibly carry my stuff around? Since people had been carrying their stuff around uneventfully for millennia in bags and pouches made of leather, cloth, hemp, et cetera. With all this in mind, we have drafted an ordinance which will reduce the amount of plastic waste that we create as a community. And I won't go into too much of the details of the ordinance, as you all have the ordinance, and I'm sure it will soon be available on the website, possibly. In short, the ordinance we have drafted for Ellsworth will eliminate the distribution of single-use carryout plastic bags, which are these things, just for clarification, these things. It will apply to all businesses equally regardless of size. It will encourage the use of reusable shopping bags, such as these generously donated by Hanford in Ellsworth, and these, this is a reusable bag. The ordinance will also allow the business to provide paper bags for free or for a fee. It's up to them. This ordinance will not apply to plastic produce bags, seafood bags, bakery bags, or newspaper bags. We have taken great pains to draft a well-thought-out, comprehensive document, taking into consideration the interests of both citizens and businesses of Ellsworth. This ordinance is also consistent with plastic bag ordinances passed by our neighbors in Blue Hill, Southwest Harbor, and Bar Harbor. These three towns are part of a growing number of cities and towns in Maine that have adopted successful policies that significantly reduce the number of single-use plastic bags in their communities. It is our hope that Ellsworth will be the next forward-thinking community to adopt such a policy. In doing so, Ellsworth would be setting an example for other communities in our region, and taking a step towards mitigating the increasing problem of toxic plastic pollution in our precious oceans, groundwater, wildlife, and in our bodies. Thank you for your time in considering this ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has. Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
How many pounds, what's the weight of the number of plastic bags used by stores in Ellsworth?
Seriously?
They won't tell us.
They won't tell us.
We've asked. Trade secret.
Then how many of whatever that weight is, how many pounds are recycled?
1% of all single-use plastic bags are recycled.
In Ellsworth?
Anywhere.
So we don't have a number? We don't know how many are doled out by stores, and we don't know how many are recycled?
1% of all plastic bags.
In, I'm talking in Ellsworth?
In Ellsworth, it's a national average.
That's an industry standard.
Yeah.
Okay, but if that's an average, Ellsworth could be higher, Ellsworth could be lower.
Could be. Probably not lower, definitely higher.
So is there, if we don't have the numbers, how do we know if there's a problem?
I wish I had brought my phone in, I could show you the pictures I took this morning of the trash, the single-use plastic bags, all over the city. If that's not a problem, I don't know what is. And not only that, that's an accumulation of rubbish and garbage, which I believe is in violation of two of the city ordinances.
There's litter every place. I'm not arguing that, but without firm numbers, you're asking that we, as a council, direct businesses how to operate, what they can or can't do. But we don't have any, any numbers to go by.
There are, if you want numbers, go online, look at the numbers. There are numbers in numbers in numbers. Whether they apply to Ellsworth, is it...
I would be more inclined to say, if you want an ordinance, go online and bring us the numbers. This sounds to me like a...
We have. How many public forums have we had?
Like a problem looking for a solution.
No. It's a problem. I don't care if there are only 10 bags. I mean, the creation of single-use plastic bags in itself, the manufacture and distribution of them, is bad for the environment, not to mention when they get into the environment, either from blowing away or in the waste stream, they're again bad for the environment. Eventually, those plastic bags will end up in the ocean where they break down into microplastics.
Who's the biggest offender? This is the, in my mind, this is the Ellsworth City Council. I'm not, you know, I don't, for this consideration, I can't consider, you know, other locality states or whatever, but I'm guessing that a lot of the plastics in the ocean don't come from Ellsworth, Maine.
Well...
Mr. Chairman, I thought we had an agreement, this would be a presentation on an argument.
I'm not looking, this isn't an argument.
You and I had an agreement, this would be a presentation, and we'd love to fight again.
In all actuality, the Gulf of Maine, which is right out there, is warming faster than any body of water in the world, and a lot of that has to do with the breakdown of plastics in the ocean. When these plastics degrade, they release toxic chemicals that produce heat and gases. It's a known fact, the Gulf of Maine is warming more quickly than any body of water, and a lot of that is from plastic bags. I'm not saying it's all from plastic bags, of course it's not, but the plastic bags do find their way into the Gulf of Maine. It's indisputable.
Yes, sir?
So I just want to make just a general comment, and it's going along, because I know we're gonna have further discussions, there'll be other opportunities. One of the things that I think is important for the council to do is to ask lots of questions, whether we're in favor of it, opposed to it. I think this is an issue, especially if we're going to be developing an ordinance, we need to have a dialogue, and we need to have all sides, and we need to have a discussion. I think that's the best way to approach something like this, and I hope moving forward that we can have those discussions, we can talk about what are all the various options, including, I already know that the state, there's at least one proposal, one bill that's been introduced, in terms of, is that a better option or not, should we be pursuing that? Those are the kinds of things that I think would be helpful in this process, so that we can hear all perspectives. There's never one solution for any problem, and I think we can make the best decisions by having a discussion and have an opportunity to look at it from all aspects. So I hope that we can do that, and I hope moving forward, we can ask those questions and have information that's presented. I certainly hope that... I, I certainly hope that businesses, who, not all businesses are in favor of this, there's an impact on that, choices that are made after this also have an environmental impact. So I think it's, it deserves, the nature of this deserves a rich discussion on that, and that's certainly what I will be looking forward. Asking questions doesn't mean that for or against, it just means that we're inviting conversation.
Great, I agree, I think it's great, I look forward to it as well.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you. I'm Martha Dickinson from Ellsworth, and part of the Green Action Team, and we did understand that tonight was to be presentations, and we are hopeful that you will want to have a workshop where we can have experts pose and cons, and have a thorough dialogue and discussion. But we understood that wasn't happening right now, but if that's what you want to do, it's your pleasure. But I do have a letter. Nicole Groholsky is an active member of our team as well, she's now our state representative in Augusta, and she wasn't able to be here tonight because she has duties in Augusta. But she wanted me to read to you all her statement, and I will leave a copy with Heidi here. Address to you all, dear Chair Blanchett and members of the Ellsworth City Council, thank you for entertaining Counselor Fortier's introduction of the Ellsworth Green Action Team's proposed single-use carry-out plastic bag ordinance. I am disappointed to miss tonight's meeting, but look forward to working with you all directly at an upcoming workshop about the proposed ordinance. As my colleagues and fellow Ellsworth citizens have likely stated this evening, there are many reasons why our coastal community should consider reducing plastic products where we are most easily able, such as the point-of-sale in a retail or grocery store. Cost of waste management, cost to our land and marine environments, and cost to our own health are all good reasons to start curtailing our plastic consumption right here at home. Many citizens look to our elected leaders at all levels to help solve problems using the available tools, ordinances, and laws. It is tempting to hope or assume that state government will pass laws to reduce plastic consumption, making local action unnecessary. Indeed, there are many bills that will be introduced this session that aim to do just that, including one currently filed in my name. That's Nicole's. However, I cannot say with full confidence that any will pass into law, or that if they do, they will contain language that best suits our city and its businesses and citizens. The Ellsworth Green Action Team has worked very hard to craft an ordinance that is similar to ordinances in our surrounding communities that also fits well right here at home. We have received input from many citizens and businesses, and have hosted educational events and forums. We ask that you, our city council, help us continue to move this work forward, to craft an ordinance that works for Ellsworth while being a leader in the statewide conversation. We would be proud to join the twenty-some-odd other Maine communities who have already restricted single-use carry-out plastic bags. It is often this sort of local action that encourages state action. Sincerely, Nicole Groholsky. That's Groholsky. And I just wanted to ask, add for myself, I was going to speak more about the conversations we have had with businesses and citizens in the community in the last, since last June, say. We, we have had face-to-face interviews with many business owners and managers, we've got a lot of encouragement, and for example, stores like, big stores like Haniford and Trade Winds and Shaw's are, are already doing this in other localities, and they are just waiting for us to do something, to, to act, and they are, they want it to be an ordinance, they don't want it voluntarily doesn't work because that sets up an unfair competitive thing going. So, you know, we, we really do think there's a lot, the interviews we've had are very favorable, I'm sure it's not a hundred percent. And another source of information is the Retailers Association of Maine. You know, we, we participated with the Ellsworth Chamber of Commerce and a couple of events, one forum had, had somebody from the Retailers Association of Maine, they've done an informal survey that showed, you know, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, it's here somewhere, but, you know, it was a large percent of the businesses are, are ready to do this. It's not, it's a thing, and, and it's really hard, you can't get the statistics on what's happening in Ellsworth and Haniford, they don't, we, we can't get those numbers, but we can just see overall, there are many studies now that have been done, it's, it's a big problem globally, and we now know that there, a lot of it ends up in the rivers and eventually in the ocean. Just Saturday, I was in, came out of Haniford, and, you know, I'm a pretty old lady, and I had, I stood there to pick up a couple of these plastic bags that were flying around. Luckily, they were kind of glued to the ground by ice, so I, you know, could get them up. But, you know, they're just flopping around all over the place, the people, not everybody is careful with their plastic bags. So, it's, it's no doubt that there's a problem, even though we can't come up with hard numbers, I don't, nobody can do that. But if, if even the Retailers Association of Maine can't, can't come up with these numbers, and Haniford won't give them to us, then, you know, that they, this is, we, we don't need that kind of evidence, because many other studies have been done that show, as Julia said, you know, very few, very little of the plastic that we use gets recycled or gets dealt with carefully. And this is just one step to have, deal with these carry-out plastic bags, they're an easy thing to do. And we also need to be encouraging industries to quit producing everything in plastics, we need more returnables, reusables. It's a whole, a new plastic economy where you recycle everything, reuse everything, goes, a circular economy is ahead of us, and Ellsworth needs to be part of that process. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, if I may, that email about the Maine Retail Association was sent to all of us on December 6th, so it should be in your box somewhere, I just pulled it up.
My name's Leslie Harlow, I'm a resident of Ellsworth. I happen to be responsible for four dumpsters. I'm an entrepreneur, I own a lodging business, a restaurant, a seafood processing facility, and I'm co-owner of the Main Grind Building downtown. So I think I can speak with a little experience when it comes to talking about dealing with trash, dealing with visitors to the area, dealing with the public in general. Last spring, when I opened my business for the season, we decided not to serve plastic straws. My staff was outraged for about three minutes. Once we opened, and once we stopped serving straws, we had 12,000 customers over the course of five months, and only on several occasions did anybody get up in arms, and it wasn't even that, they just simply needed a straw, and we gave them a plastic straw. I'm in the lodging business, I deal with tourists all day long for six months. And people come to our area, they come through Ellsworth, they stay around Ellsworth, they look at Ellsworth, and they should see a community that embraces the same values that a lot of these people are finding in the communities that they live in. New York City, Boston, New Haven, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Kansas City, El Paso, Texas, you name it, a lot of these communities now throughout the United States, let alone the world, which includes the EU, are dealing with the reality that we have to manage plastics in the waste stream. They come to Ellsworth, we're trying to build up more of a tourism industry in Ellsworth, we want to be a community that's kind of part of the New World Order, that we're showing our colors, we're showing that we're responsible, and we're showing that we care. Here in Ellsworth, I happen to be good buddies with Nick, who's the manager of Haniford. Nick has shared with me over the past year, part of his frustration with Haniford is that they want an ordinance, they want the city to tell them what to do. In many communities in Maine, and New England, and upstate New York, and New Jersey, where they have stores, there's already a mandate in those communities about dealing with single-use plastic banned bags. They've done it, they have no problem with any of this. Haniford in particular, even more than Shaw's, has done a really good job being a steward for their customers in terms of encouraging all of us who shop in there to bring our own bag, like the ones that Julia pointed out. Haniford is very good at being very sensitive about people in need, who might not be able to swing it to pick up the bag, they are very helpful in there, they will make a bag available to people because they support the cause. So my view is, right here, standing here today, and the workshops that we've had, the generosity of Gary here, Fortier, working with us, all of the things that we've learned over the course of the last year working on this, it's clear that Ellsworth needs to step up and be one of the communities of Maine, of which now more than twenty-five percent, and it, this, this increase, this changes every week, more than twenty-five percent of the residents who live in the state of Maine, live in a community that has adopted a single-use ban or ordinance for plastic bags. And my final word is, tonight, you can go to Haniford, Rennie's, depending on who's working at Walgreens, and a number of other stores here in Ellsworth, where you are automatically going to be given something other than just a plastic bag that's available to you. Rennie's totally switched, no more plastic, the white bag with the black letters, gonzo, and they've been using plastic, paper bags now for quite a while. Why? Because the people of Maine spoke, and they said to Rennie's, one of, one of our flagship stores, we don't want plastic. And Rennie said, no problem. Haniford, no problem. Shaw's will eventually come around, they're a little slower to the game, but they're, they're right behind. These companies are taking this very seriously, and we need to take it seriously in our community, and to show our colors, and to be part of what's, it's here. And not even getting into the environmental aspects of it, which Julia covered very well, and Martha and Roz are going to discuss, these are really significant issues, we are part of the world, and we can't isolate ourselves any longer with some just draconian way of looking at what we've created with plastic bags. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name's Rosamund Ray, I live at 149 Stack Polway in Ellsworth. Thank you for allowing me to speak in support of the proposed plastic bag ordinance, I am a member of the Green Action Team. I've been a member for a few months, I'm a fairly new member, and was really thrilled to find that this was one of the projects that we were working on. Plastic was once perceived as a miracle material for its versatility, strength, and low production costs. What was not known was that plastic waste never goes away, it just breaks down into smaller and smaller bits of toxics, toxic matter known as microplastics and microfibers. Now, these bits are wreaking havoc at every level of the food chain, and in all the world's oceans, and even in our own Union River Bay. Single-use plastic bags are a part of the plastic waste problem. Worldwide, ten billion plastic bags are used weekly, and only one to three percent of plastic bags are ever recycled. In the United States, an average person uses between three hundred and five hundred bags a year, and each bag is used for an average of twelve minutes. The ordinance before you is intended to help deal with the volume of plastic waste in the city of Ellsworth. The ordinance is informed by the solid waste management hierarchy found in the Maine state statutes to reduce, reuse, and recycle materials destined for disposal. The highest priority is to reduce our use of plastic bags. The proposed ordinance does just that, by eliminating an estimated three hundred to five hundred plastic bags per person per year. The second priority is to reuse the plastic bag. Plastic carry-out bags reused once in a wastebasket or for cat litter barely fits the reuse directive, and simply perpetuates the existence of these unnecessary bags. Instead, let's be creative and use plastic items not covered by this ordinance to fill those needs. For example, bread bags, chip bags, mail-order bags. Durable, reusable bags, like the ones Julia pointed out, that can be used hundreds of times, must replace the single-use bag. Each time a customer brings his or her own bag into a store, our local merchants will be spared the expense of providing a bag at checkout, a nice added benefit for the merchants. The third priority in the hierarchy is recycling, and generally, unfortunately, these days, it's failing. For years, recycling has dominated the waste management spotlight. Stuffing our bags into recycling bins makes us feel good. However, in reality, the cost of recycling plastic bags often outweighs their value, and only a tiny percent are ever recycled. Now, recycling Ellsworth has been curtailed recently, resulting in higher costs to the individual and to the city, i.e. taxpayer, as more solid waste will go to the Penobscot Energy Recovery Center. Reducing the volume of plastic bags in Ellsworth will reduce the waste stream and help save us all money. In closing, the proposed ordinance will not solve our solid waste problem, but eliminating plastic bags that we simply do not need is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one more, really quick. So I'm Mark Whiting, I live in Ellsworth on the Gary Moore Road, I'm also on the Green Action Plan. I'm a volunteer, and I've been involved with the Card Brook and roadside cleanups in Ellsworth for years and years. I think I can offer some insight into the nature of the problem, due to the fact that I've been involved in these cleanups on Card Brook, I've been there every year for ten years, since the very beginning of the cleanups. So even though we do this every year, this last year, last May of 2018, we picked up eight hundred pounds of trash in Card Brook, that's just below High Street, and, you know, it's eight hundred pounds, so we, you know, cleaned it up last year, and we cleaned it up the year before, so eight hundred pounds has accumulated in one year. Obviously, most of that is not plastic bags, but plastic bags are by far the, most of the volume. So I think, you know, we've got a big trash problem, we are part of the problem here in Ellsworth, it's not somebody else, else's issue. The plastic bag ordinance, as others have said, is not the total solution, but it is a beginning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselors? Discussion? Questions?
If you're ready, Ms. Chairman, I'd move that the city council thank the presenters, and direct the city manager to move this forward through staff review, and legal review, when and if he thinks it's necessary, and if necessary, schedule a workshop so the public can have input before we move on.
And staff would, in that motion, staff would do what? What, where would you like them to be directed?
Well, I would suggest, well, we don't have a second on the motion, so I shouldn't be discussing it.
Second?
I would suggest that would include comparing it to other municipalities, what they're doing, and comparing it to the state issues, make sure that it is a legal tender, make sure that we cite the right MRS... sure that we cite the right MRSA if we do, make sure the penalties are within reason, make sure that the administrator of this is the proper person in the city hall, whether it be the city manager, code enforcement, just like we would any other ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Cole?
I'd further suggest that that directive also be to monitor state legislation as well, and on that front, because there are bills before the legislature that could set a standard that we would have to abide by, just like the marijuana laws, you know, with the state regulating, we want to be on top of that.
Counselor Hamel?
So, you said if necessary, schedule a workshop, I would just, I would prefer that we, that we establish that we will have a workshop. I just think it's important that the public has an opportunity. If we're developing an ordinance, I just, I think anytime that that step is being taken, that everybody should have a chance to speak on it, and have an opportunity to have a dialogue, and understand, and build understanding. So that's the one thing that I would ask, is that we require that of us, that we have a workshop, and we have a conversation.
I agree, I should have said when ready, have a workshop, because I don't want to schedule one for, my might not be ready for it.
I agree.
Yep, good.
The only caveat that comes to the top of my head, we're down a planner. So that's going to make the CEO that much busier. He's temporarily taking over that position, so it just, it just adds to the pile. I'm not, are we putting a time limit on this? Is that, okay.
I would tell you, Steve Fuller is probably more in tune with this subject than Michelle Gagnon. He's been involved from the get-go, he's made checks about what other communities are doing, he is in the know on this, and that's an asset that I would expect Manager Cole to utilize, and that's why I didn't put a time. I want to see what the legislature's going to do, they want to move ahead fast, I've tried to throw a little bit of cold water on it, if we can get the state to do it so it's consistent throughout the state, then that's what we should follow. So, I understand, we have budget circle coming up pretty soon, we're going to be workshopped out, so, but I just wanted the pipeline not be forgotten.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just, I would add that I would view it as a team effort, Steve Fuller certainly on a policy level has been on top of this. CEO Dwight Tilton, certainly from an enforcement standpoint, others, so we would draw from different directions. And I would personally get involved as well, in terms of monitoring the legislation, what's going on in Augusta.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Item 16, Council Order Number 021906, request of the IT Systems Administrator for approval to sole source the Water Department Fiber Construction Project to Northeast Cable Construction. And he'll be in about five to six... Nanoseconds.
It's always money, and he always runs.
Good evening, Jason Engles, IT Systems Administrator. We've been working on a project to upgrade the communications for the Water Department from radio to fiber. Recently received the permission we need to attach the fiber to the utility poles from Amera and Consolidated Communications, and I'd like to award the construction for this project to Northeast Cable Construction. They are the vendor we use for all of the maintenance on the network now, they do our construction of any drops that we've added, and they're also doing all of the work for GWI when they attach to the network as well. Have a good relationship with them, they've treated us very well, and they're the only local contractor that is qualified to do this sort of work. They actually do all of the construction work for Spectrum in Northern Maine, so very well qualified for this kind of work. That's the gist of it, if you have any specific questions, I can answer those.
And it's Cole.
Jason, the next vendor after this vendor, this vendor is 20 miles away, did you say?
They're in Box, yeah, Northeast Cable's in Box 4, yeah.
The next potential vendor is located where?
It'd probably be Augusta area.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, the advantage of working with Northeast Cable is they're literally 25, 30 minutes away, and, you know, if we had an outage, or a fire break of some kind, so it's good, it's a good relationship that we've built with them.
Counselor Fortier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been here for a while, and people hear me, probably get tired of hearing me comment on partnerships, relationships that we have with certain vendors around. A big truck dealer that will come out in the middle of the night to help unfreeze a fire truck. This cable company is one of those, because we have fiber optic that runs underground to dispatch and everything, and if that fiber goes down in the middle of the night, you've lost communications with our public works, our public safety. So to have them literally 20 minutes away is very important, and this is a relationship that I think we need to maintain and to strengthen as we go. And I think if you check, they're probably spot on, if Spectrum is using them in Northern Maine, their prices are good, or they wouldn't be doing Spectrum's work.
Correct.
So I support this completely.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
This chair moved to approve the request of the IT System Admin to sole source the Water Department Fiber Optic Construction Project to Northeast Cable Construction in the amount of $18,330.93, with funding to come from the Water Department Capital Improvement Account. End of motion.
Second. Motion and a second, further discussion?
Which means, Mr. Chairman, this is no tax dollars. This is all water company receipts.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 17, Executive Session to Discuss Personnel Matters in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A.
Mr. Chair, move to go into executive session, discuss personnel matters in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A.
Should just give the prince this way.
All those in favor? Unanimous.